All right, we got the thumbs up sign. So I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Library Trustees of the Allen County Public Library. Today is March or May 26, 3:00 p.m. And we will do a roll call vote with our roll call assistant, Ms. Gloria.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Castleman? Mr. Seifert?
I am here.
Mr. Eisbart is not. Mr. Williams? Mr. Moss? Ms. Tucker?
I'm present.
Okay, and I am also. So we have one, two, three, four out of seven.
Awesome, awesome. Next, we'll move down to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda.
Right, there's a motion and movement, motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And approval of the minutes. The minutes were emailed to all of us earlier and also mailed to us. So we have to approve the minutes for the regular session of April 28, 2022, the executive session of April 28, 2022. There should be an approval for the May 11, 2022, April 21, 2022, and April 28, public hearings, 2022. Any corrections for the minutes?
I will go ahead and just move for approval of all amendments, all the minutes that were listed.
In a second.
I will second that.
All right, there's a proper motion to move the minutes forward. In a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then we go to our financial report.
Thank you, Sharon. And in your packet are your reports. There are no lines that are spending out of their benchmark at this point, even though spending is accelerating, of course. It's nice to see the summer programs kicking in and the various expenses for programming, supplies, and presenters, et cetera, are going at it. I know Mara is going to present in a little bit. But so it's good seeing that we're going to have full summer programs this year. The past couple of years, we haven't been able to enjoy those. So usually, I don't like seeing spending going up. In this case, I keep using the word great. Couple of news items. When we mailed these board packets, we had not gotten word from GFOA about our award for the 2020 annual financial report that afternoon. It came in, of course. And so we did win the award again. This is for the 29th consecutive year on that. And we're very happy to hear that. It's, they had a couple of suggestions. We're going to add a new schedule in the statistical section. But right now, the auditors are finishing up their analytic work this week. They should be completed. And talking with them, we should be getting close to an exit conference, either next week or the week after, which will make us make sure we have plenty of time to get this submitted for GFOA's consideration for the award for 2021 year. So that'll be the 30th mile, year milestone. Let's see, the only other thing, I guess, would be, let's see. Oh, yeah, Jill, who you had met before, myself and Susan, attended the first budget workshop. I mentioned it in here. Nothing new this year happened in the process. They didn't change any of the forms or any of the process. So we'll be continuing on with our usual calendar, which, you know, I'll be sending out next month to show the various dates coming up with the budget process. But again, we'll be doing that in our October meeting or October timeframe will be when we actually pass the budget. And so, but we're kicking up speed on that. The, you know, spreadsheets are being laid out now to analyze for next year. And obviously, with the facility master plan, we'll be taking that into account as, you know, whatever happens on that. So anyway, that's all I have to report. But I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I'm just very happy to see we got our cast.
Exactly. So were we. It was starting to concern the auditors because in every award, there are suggestions the graders have that they give you. And you need to incorporate those suggestions into it. And it's like, well, how are we going to submit the 2021 report without the suggestions for the 2021's implemented? So it was very glad they were happy to hear the award got in there. And we got the comments and we can deal with them. Nothing, actually, other than some formatting. Like I said, they suggested another schedule for the staff section. We'll put that into place. So everything looks good.
And for the exit interview, Ben plans on attending that with you, right?
Yeah.
All right, we'll take a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that moves us to the approval of claims.
Yep, I have the claims here that I'll circulate around. The highest claim, there was only 395,000 of claimed only this time. But the largest claim was the electrical service. You can tell Indiana hot weather is starting to kick in because the air conditioning is kicking. That was 99,000 of the 395. And then we're finishing up the great hall lighting. If you recall, that section of the great hall that was converted to LED, we're doing the final billings on that. So that was in there. And then the very first billings for, if you recall, a few months ago, you approved the contract to copiers and printers. This is the encompassing, the first billings on that are coming through for the printers. So that's in here also. So those are the three largest claims this time.
I'll take a motion for the approval of the claims.
So moved.
It's been motion approved for the approval of the claims. With a proper second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I'll walk these around for a second.
And that brings us to Spark Summer Preview. Mara?
Dave really sent the clip today. So I'm going to talk fast. It's like, hey, I want to do my presents, my presents, right? Prizes, because that's what summer is a big part of, what summer is about. So we, as you know, in the months of April...
Can you use the microphone, please? Use the microphone, please?
In the months of April and May, we're very busy visiting schools across the county. And these bookmarks are one of the things that we gave to the students that our staff visited at the schools because every kid loves a bookmark, right? But we also think that what every kid really loves is that this year, we get to celebrate as a part of our Summer Spark program, no overdue fines. So we're really excited about that. So this year, as Dave mentioned, is truly a return to normal. And we are ready and excited for it and a little nervous, too, because we really do believe that the community is going to be thrilled with the summer program that we have planned. Our branches are decorating to the hilt on your way out of the building. Definitely take a peek into the Children's Services Department. And you'll see bubbles and jellyfish hanging from the ceiling. This year's theme is Ocean of Possibilities. And that's our national theme for a summer learning. So we're just absolutely thrilled to be able to host programming in our locations again, to be able to serve lunches in partnership with Fort Wayne Community Schools at eight of our locations once again, and to be able to host a full Team Read team this year and to work with our partners throughout the community on that as an outreach program. So we're bringing a lot of the things that our community absolutely loves back in a way that feels like a big celebration. So speaking of celebration and speaking of Team Read, we have an amazing teen program video for you. We make Summer Spark videos regularly. And this year, we really wanted to put our power behind a program or behind a commercial that advertised how awesome the program for middle schoolers and high schoolers is because we know that elementary schoolers, their parents are ready to get them back in. But we know that teens are the ones that really drive the boat on that. So we have a really dynamic and fantastic teen librarian at the Georgetown Library, Karis Sims. And she's a former team reader. And this is the video that she made celebrating the teen summer reading program. This was shared with schools and with everyone that we visited. Now, I have to warn you before I show you this video, don't be jealous, okay? You're going to see this video. And we had to make sure that it was very clear that it was the teen program. But this is the level of excitement that we have for the summer that we're able to offer. So if you guys could show that video, that would be great.
This school year is almost done, but we are just getting ready to ramp up for the best summer ever at your local library. You might think you already know what happens at the library during the summer, but this year, we are back bigger and better than ever. Summer Spark is your chance to explore your unique interests, meet up with friends, and discover your next new thing. Check out our big programs like Tiny Art Show and Miniature Painting Mayhem. Can you escape the enchanted forest? Make an LED anglerfish? Ugh, creepy. What about comic drawing? Recycle by making a plastic smoothie? Make a terrarium? Or play Amazing Race Live? Now that's my thing. Looking for prizes? You know that's how it works. In the summer, at the library, you can get prizes for reading. We have giant prizes just for teens. Everyone can earn things like rainbow notebooks or earbuds or books like this, or this, or this. You can earn one prize drawing ticket for every hour you read. There's stuff like laser wire kit, retro photography, VIP tour of the library, Nintendo bundle, Xbox bundle, PlayStation bundle? Oh, wait, so I said prizes and now you're listening? I got you. It's easy. I want you to win those prizes, too. Here's all you have to do. Number one, read. Number two, track your time online with the app or on an official bookmark. Number three, earn one drawing ticket for every hour you spend reading, but only up to 18 hours. Number four, come into the library, get your prizes, enter your tickets, and cross your fingers because we will have 47 prize winners this summer. And one just might be you, but you have to read to make that happen. So come down to the library this summer and be a part of Summer Spark and get ready for oceans of possibilities.
So that is what this summer is going to look like. And it is so good to be back and to invite our community to once again celebrate out of school learning and to have an amazing summer at the ACPL. So thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
I don't have a question as much as I have a statement. I am a little jealous.
It's real.
That is so awesome. Very, very, very good presentation.
Sharon, adults can participate in summer learning as well. You can track your reading.
That is true. We do have very exciting prizes for adults this year. Adults also can earn tickets towards a variety of really exciting things.
Oh, that's cool, yeah. Any questions?
No, Mara, really well done. That was great.
It's pretty, it's pretty easy to get to talk about something that's pretty amazing that's happening when you get to work with Karis.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Mara. That's pretty cool. Love it, love it. Well, that takes us down to our committee reports and capital projects.
All right, thanks, Sharon. The day's report will be, again, kind of, we are in a wait mode right now. We had our public hearings, made the presentation. And we are moving forward, though. Just a quick update, I've worked with Susan, Kim, Dave here to try to prepare more details and specific steps to be taken. It's going to include, we're going to need to update our facility planning and design guide. We're creating what we call generic space requirements for buildings specific to, we have basically 20, 25, the other sizes we had. We need to design those so when we do go out and look for architects and people to build, that we have the design specs, things that, at least some category detail available for them. And then we'll talk to them about making it even more detailed. We're also talking about how we move forward the whole process, the phasing of the entire process. We think it's very important to have that part ready so we can talk to any of those deciding this decision, whether to move forward with the bond, to have as much information as we can without breaking the bank to do a whole lot of design guides and consultants and the like. But to have as much information about what are, really, the overall scope of the, and the details of the timing of the project will be. So I think in June, we're going to have a lot more to present. But that's really our only update for today.
Awesome. Are there any questions on the capital projects? All right, we'll move on. There's a request to adjust an authorized staffing table. So I...
That is me?
Yes, thank you so much, Sharon.
So I am coming to this afternoon with a proposal to add two new positions to our staffing table. This comes from a study that we've been doing for the past few months upon the resignation of Kim Quintero. When Kim left that vacancy, we went through a variety of exercises to see what our staffing needs were. That included multiple visioning sessions led by Kim and meetings with numerous employees to get their input and observations, and also studying organizational charts from numerous library systems around the country. So what we are proposing this afternoon is to eliminate the Director of Collection and Information Technology Services position, which that is the position Kim Quintero had, and use the savings created by eliminating that position and by other staffing changes to create two new positions that would be at a lower classification level. Kim's position was M4. The two we are requesting to add would be M3. And those two new positions are a collection services manager and a branch services manager. So some of the organizational advantages of creating these two new positions include the following. With the collection services manager, collection development would have a full-time manager with the relevant education and experience to oversee this vital component of the library. We know our community highly values the ACPL collection. And this important aspect of our work, we feel merits an additional management-level staff member with collection development as their primary focus. Also, considering we are entering into a facility master plan where we will, we hope have some new buildings and some new collections, we think it would be a perfect time to bring in someone at the management level to oversee this part of our work. They would be inheriting a really great team. We have an excellent team of collection development staff. They would assume the managerial role over those collection development staff members. Kim Boland currently has 15 direct reports. And that is not ideal or sustainable, particularly with the enormous amount of work she does surrounding the facility master plan. So we believe creating a branch services manager to be the direct supervisor of the branch managers would free up time for Kim that she could use toward other critical system-wide projects and initiatives. Kim also has been serving as the interim supervisor of the Information Technology Department, drawing on her previous IT experience, both working in public libraries and also working as a library consultant. And we think this is working very well, and we'd like to continue this structure. And we feel it provides a greater synergy between public services and technology because they are so linked. And we also believe that creating two new additional M3 level manager positions offers additional professional growth and career path opportunities for staff. So I have also included in your summary the pay structure for the M3 position. And also, LaRae created a spreadsheet that shows some of the savings we are achieving by the elimination of some positions and also some positions being reclassified or someone resigning who was at the top of a pay scale. And then we are bringing in people who are at a different stage in their career and aren't quite at those top levels yet. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And LaRae and Dave are also here to answer any questions regarding the HR financial sides of it.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions. I think, I've looked at this a little bit in more in-depth, too. And I think, and I just want to report, I certainly support it. I think Kim does have a role to play in what, in what the Capital Projects Committee is asking of staff, a very significant role. And it makes sense to me what's been designed here. So I would support this as well. I'll make a motion then to approve.
Second.
It's been motion to approve and seconded. Are there any other discussions? I think the only thing I'd say is, I support it, too. And I know you guys have, you know what's going on behind the scenes. I would, once the capital campaign is over, do we suspect that there'll be any, or not capital campaign, once the project is over, capital project is over, do we suspect that there'll be any additional movement that may be needed?
There could be. Kim, she's been working on some of that already. Do you have anything to add to that?
I think it makes sense now. So we have a motion on floor. And the second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Awesome.
Thank you.
Steal your floor with the executive director's report.
Great, well, first off, a show and tell. This caught Gloria's attention. Gloria loves a book. So this is Libraries That Build Business: Advancing Small Businesses and Entrepreneurship in Public Libraries. And you may notice that my copy is signed, and I'll pass it around. And it is signed because two of our staff members, including one sitting right there, hey, Mara, they were contributors to this book. Nate Bernard and Mara Honeywell were contributors for a recently released American Library Association book, Libraries That Build Business. And this book includes information about our Team Read Summer Work Program. And I included an excerpt from the book in your board packet. So this is an incredible honor for our staff and our library and their work to be included in a professional publication from the American Library Association that is being used by libraries around the country as a model for their work. So I know I'm being a bit of a stage mom here, but I'm just so, so proud. So thank you so much to Nate and Mara for contributing. It just, it reflects so well on the work that you do. And we're very proud. Yeah. I submitted a written report, so a few highlights from it. Our new Director of Community Programs and Partnerships, Beth Boatwright, she is in Fort Wayne. She moved here about a week ago, so she's settling in. And her first day here at the ACPL will be May 31st. And also, we are starting interviews to replace Stephanie's vacancy for the Director of Communications position. Speaking of crowds coming back to the library, we had an estimated 11,000 people. That's not a typo, 11,000 people. Visit the main library on May 15th for the return of the Cherry Blossom Festival. And LeAnn got in about 30,000 steps that day. So LeAnn and her team did an amazing job supporting this event. And all of our staff working just did an incredible job to ensure that the event was enjoyable and safe. And I have to give a special shout out to our EVS staff because when you have 11,000 people come through a building, that building gets a lot of wear and tear, right? And I was here Sunday afternoon and, you know, it was looking kind of rough. I mean, that's just how it is, right? And I come back Monday morning and it's like magical elves came in overnight and made it beautiful again, but they weren't magical elves. It was the hard work of our EVS staff. I was just so impressed and incredulous at how quickly they turned it around, like nothing ever happened. And the building was sparkly and beautiful on Monday morning. So special thanks to them. I wanted to share that thanks to the recommendation of Kurt, I accepted an appointment to the Friends of the Lincoln Collection Board. That was a vacancy created by Stephanie's resignation. And I also wanted to share a big success story from Kurt and the genealogy team. The Midwest Travel Journalists Association had their conference here in Fort Wayne about a month ago, and included in their activities was a visit to the Genealogy Center. So the Genealogy Center and Kurt worked in conjunction with Visit Fort Wayne to prepare for our guest. And in the matter of a month, the genealogy staff compiled 22 individual family histories, some over hundreds of pages in length. Kurt is nodding. So when the travel journalists came here to get their tour of the Genealogy Center and the Rowland Center, they received copies of their family history. And as Kurt likes to say, he likes to make people cry in a good way because for some of, it was a very emotional moment. And we received such accolades for our part in their Fort Wayne junket. And we've heard such great feedback from the attendees and from Visit Fort Wayne that for so many of the attendees coming here was the highlight of their visit to Fort Wayne. And that generates really fantastic press for the region, which has already started to come out. So kudos to Kurt and his team for being such a great host. And this isn't on your written report, but I wanted to give you an update. A few months ago, you may remember, you approved that we accept a grant from the state library for $21,143 in ARPA pandemic relief funds that we would use to purchase a second library at home outreach vehicle. Well, unfortunately, but not surprisingly, our order for the vehicle was canceled because of supply chain and manufacturing issues. And we were not alone. Many libraries that requested the same thing found that their order was canceled. So instead, what we're doing with the money, we are able to buy some equipment to upgrade our existing outreach van. So that includes a new lift. The previous lift on the van, it was outside the van. So it was kind of unsightly, and also it was out in the elements. And it was also very heavy and not particularly ergonomically friendly. So the new one we are buying is stored inside the van, so it doesn't get rain and snow, and it's much lighter and much easier to maneuver. And we're also equipping the existing van we already have with shelving to make it a lot easier for our library at home people to have their deliveries on the van to take out to the assisted living facilities and the homes. And we are going to be spending about $25,000 to upgrade the van we already have. And that will be able to be reimbursed by this grant up to $21,143. So the good news is, we're not as much out of pocket. The bad news is, we don't have a second van, and we're not quite sure where we're going to land on that. As we planned for the 2023 budget, we'll be talking to the library at home folks and to Dave to see if we want to pursue buying a second van. And quite frankly, we'll probably want to reach out to the dealers to see what manufacturing is now because when they cancel the order, it's for a Dodge Pro Master. And they didn't even give an indication as to when it might ever be available. But we're going to make lemonade out of lemons, and we're still getting some upgrades to our van that will really help our folks who do library at home services. And that's all I have as far as a director's report. Happy to answer any questions?
I'll just say, I, just individually, I'd say, if, when we can, let's get the second one. But that's, I know that may be a while, so. But I definitely think that's important for our community. And I think it's a great idea. And I'd just like to say, you hadn't mentioned it, but you also sent us the collection management report, which I think has really been really well done over the last, I don't know how long it's been we've been getting it. And I think it's also being put up on the website now, as I recall, are possibly available for people to review because I think it's really well done. And I think it's interesting for the board members.
It is available for anybody to review upon request. Just shoot me an email at libridirector@acpl.info, and I will send it out. I've been asked before, and I'm happy to do it.
Susan, on the van, with the funds, the way that we receive the funds, do we have a timeline on when we have to spend those funds since there?
Yes, it has to be spent by the end of July, and that won't be a problem. Yeah. So it's a reimbursable grant. So once all those bills, or actually, I believe the van, I'm going to look at Dave. I think in mid-June, the van is going for the installation of the shelving. The shelving is already here on site, but we have a date for the installation in mid-June. And then once we get all those bills in, we just submit the invoices to the state for reimbursement.
Got you. Any other questions? We'll move on then to new business. Is there any new business? Seeing none, how about comments from the public? Any comments, no comments from our viewing public on social media? Then that is the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we'll consider the adjournment.
Thank you.
Thank you.